7:00 PM. Due to the fact that the selectmen have one at the same night, I thought it would be an hour would be fair for folks to be able to go to one or both if they decided to. But we can continue with board business. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I have any public participation at this time? Okay, approval of minutes.
Oh, I do have.
We've got a couple of sealed sessions we need.
That's what I have here. It's one and it's two.
A motion to accept.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to accept the minutes.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Any discussion? Everybody look okay? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Non-public session two from May 1st.
Move to accept.
Motion by Mrs. Cardinal to accept. Second by Mr. Frida. Any discussion? Any changes or anything, folks? Everybody had enough time? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All right. And non-public session three from May 1st. Do I have a motion?
To move.
Motion by Mrs. Cardinal.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any changes or anything on these folks?
I don't think.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Non-public session four from May 1st.
移到
Removed by Mrs. Moore.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion on these. Pretty cut and dry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Non-public session five, May 1st.
Move to accept.
Motion by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Mrs. McElhenney. Any discussion on these?
Whenever we do nominations, do we usually include the list of names in the minutes?
They don't usually.
No.
It's done in...well, where this was done as a list, it would be probably attached as part of.
Could we do that?
Yeah, I can attach the list.
Okay, so approval of these minutes with the nomination list to be attached. All those in favor? Aye.
Yeah, just hyphenate "nonrenewal."
Okay. Nope, it's fine. Non-public session six from May 1st.
Move to accept.
Removed by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Mrs. McElhenney. Any discussion on these? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Non-public session seven from May 1st. Removed by Mrs. Moore, second by Mrs. McElhenney. Any discussion?
I just had a question. Was that in regards to a substitute teacher position? Or was it?
It was a substitute position.
Yeah, I didn't know if it specified as a teacher.
It wasn't specified as teacher. So a teacher should be taken out.
I had that seen.
Ah, good catch.
Good catch. Anything else? Okay. All those in favor as amended? Aye. And public session from May 1st.
Just a question before we do that. Did we do four?
We did?
You wrote it on four.
All right. Public session, May 1st. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Removed by Mrs. Moore, second by Mr. Frida. Discussion on these minutes?
The only question I had regarding the driver's ed, it says it's $600 per class.
Per student.
But it's supposed to be per student, correct?
It's $600. The charge is per student, per class.
Okay, because it just says $600 per class.
Okay.
Mrs. Cardinal, did you have something?
Yeah, this was part of the student report on page nine at the very end. So it was copy and pasted in, but I don't know what the JV reference is.
I believe it was a reference to another student, right?
I don't know. I copied it the way.
Right. Let me look here.
How many lines were bottom?
No, it should be JV.
Oh, I thought he mentioned a student at one point.
Oh.
Where are we? What line?
It's the very end.
Of his report?
I think it's baseball, meaning varsity is two and two, and JV is at two and three, or one and three.
We don't have JV.
So what does he mean?
He probably meant softball. Maybe there was a typo?
Maybe.
Because I think that was their record.
It's because he talks about baseball and softball teams, so probably.
Yeah, it's softball. So we'll just change it to SB.
Maybe that was ESPY.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay.
And then on page 10, Mr. Frida's motion to buy a sixth tablet, not an iPad.
I'm sorry. It's not an iPad. I just think that distinction's...yeah. It's important because they're expensive. iPads are expensive, that's not what we're buying.
Sure is, dude.
And then lastly, I thought at the very end of the meeting, we approved the non-public session four minutes from April 17th. Originally, at the top of our public minutes, we had tabled those so that we could discuss in non-public. And then when we came out of non-public session.
We did.
We made motion and approved.
You did approve.
April 17th, non-public session four minutes. But we did not seal those, right?
Non-public session four was not sealed.
No, from April 17th. The ones we discussed later.
Let me go back and double check.
Why do I think we did?
From the April 17th?
Yes.
Yes, you did seal those.
So we need to include in these public minutes both approving them and sealing them in the vote. We can do it again. There's nothing prohibiting us from doing it twice.
After we approve these minutes?
We would have to...
Unless do you have in your handwritten notes from May 1st? You don't have them with you.
I don't have my handwritten notes with me.
It was unanimous.
Well, the seal was unanimous. I believe on the approval, I abstained because I wasn't here. On April 17th. I missed that meeting.
That would have been true.
So then do we table approval of these public minutes?
Well, no, it would just become part of...if we wanted to just do it again tonight, it would just become part of these minutes.
I mean, we could just tell her what the vote was. She doesn't have her minutes to look at. The vote was...we all know how we voted. It was four to one...it was four yes votes for those minutes.
And one abstain.
And one abstain. And then it was a unanimous decision to seal four, but how long? That I don't recall.
I thought it was 10 years.
10 years? It was.
Because of the legal issue.
Yeah, and the reason was rendering board decision ineffective.
So we're going to add that to these minutes. Okay? All right. Anything else on these minutes? Okay? We'll vote on these as amended? All those in favor? Aye? Okay. New business, I think because we have a gentleman here from Siemens rather than waiting, letting him wait through all the other stuff we have. We have a Siemens presentation, so sir, I would ask you to take the microphone and...
Sure.
You know, just so the folks at home can hear you.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a...
I need to get the mic because he's got the camera.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Cardinal.
If it's easier to detach it, you can walk back and forth, you can do that too. That's just primarily so the folks at home can hear the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did some handouts. I'd like to do that just in case power goes out or something happens. But yeah, thanks for having me today. My name's Sean Foye. I'm with Siemens Industry, part of the Performance Contracting Division. Currently, Siemens does some of your HVAC service in the district. So we work closely with Larry, Lori, and Ruth Fallon in the past. And they asked us to...we've actually been talking over the last minute, month or two, just about energy in general, infrastructure in the district, things like that. And I actually have a personal past here in the district as well. I worked on the service side of things previously. So I've been in boiler rooms here, I've been throughout your schools, and I kind of know how your...what the current situation is, and it's very typical with most schools in Maine, New Hampshire. So we've been talking a lot just about performance contracting, what it is. And Ruth Fallon and the team thought it'd be a good idea for me to come in and present to you guys what it is. This is not going to be a Siemens commercial or a bunch of stuff about Siemens, but it's going to be what is performance contracting and the benefits of it. There will be some, you know, sort of personal Siemens experiences in there. So we'll see some pictures and things like that, the projects that we've done, just as examples, but most of it will be, you know, very vendor neutral, just kind of what it is. So again, thank you for your time. It'll be about 15 minutes or so, so Ruth Fallon asked me to keep it relatively short. So I could talk for an hour about this. It's that exciting, but...yeah, so we call it infrastructure optimization, utilizing performance contracting. We call it that because we like to look at your...every school district as an entire...as an entity. So, you know, I think a lot of times it's easy to come around and to do an energy audit, you know, for a school, have somebody come in and say, oh, let's track your utility data and just give you an energy audit. These are the things you can do. Here's a list of things you can do, and I'll go for it, you know? And then as a school system, you're left there saying, well, how do we pay for these things? How do we design them? How do we engineer them? Things like that. So this model really allows you to tackle all of those issues at one time. So again, just quick introductions. We'll talk about some challenges as a business that you guys have, insight into those challenges, and then how do you actually take an energy audit and make things happen? And then more about the infrastructure optimization. So real quick, typical concerns you see in a school district, you know, obviously reduced tax revenues, declining student enrollments, operational decreases. I mean, Larry, I know he left the room, but, you know, sees a lot of that. With your infrastructure, deferred maintenance, a lot of capital costs to replace the aging infrastructure, you know, you get a list of stuff. I want to replace this boiler. I want to replace this air handler. How do we do...how do you get that done? Then you've got high energy and operational costs for your existing infrastructure. And then, of course, you have, you know, the community and the voters and things like that. You have...everybody wants to be energy efficient and sustainable. You want to have more control over your schools and your environment that kids are learning in. And then, of course, improving that learning and work environment for the teachers and for the students. So that's kind of...those are some of the challenges, obviously, and I think as we go through this presentation, you'll see how we can attack each of those. Real quick, if you don't know what performance contracting is, an energy services performance contract, it's an agreement between a building owner or a district and an ESCO, energy services company. Could be Siemens, could be Honeywell, could be John's Controls, could be anybody. But what you do is you identify, design, and you install energy-related savings improvements. And that savings pays for that equipment over time, and it's guaranteed. So that's kind of performance contracting in a nutshell. If anybody has a question, please fire one at me. Don't be afraid to raise your hand and ask a question, because I know everybody's probably seeing this for the first time, so. So we talked about performance contracting. I'm a pictures person, so I like to put it in a bar graph. So as you can see, energy-related capital improvements are paid for by energy savings and operational cost savings. So in this graph over here, before you enter into a contract, you have your utility payments that you're making currently, whether it's electricity, gas, oil, et cetera. And after a performance contract, you have a couple of different bars here with different colors. So what we've done is after you do a performance contract, you reduce your utility payments down. That's the savings, right? What we're going to do is we're going to keep that line item there in your budget. We're going to use that savings to make payments for the work that you're doing. So you'll have your payment to your financial institution as well as your service payments in there. And when we say service payments, that's obviously after you install equipment, you want to maintain it and have it be serviced, as well as there's a measure of measurement and verification that goes along with performance contracting. So whichever energy services company you chose, if you did decide to go this route, you would be partnering with them year over year so that they, if it's us or whoever it is, would come in every year and measure and verify that the savings were realized. So in the beginning, you're going to partner with somebody and say, okay, we're going to build a baseline for your utility data, what you use. We're going to replace A through G equipment, and you're going to save X amount of dollars. So that's all agreed upon in the beginning. There's no magic numbers thrown out there, you know, thrown out of a dart at a board or something like that. It's all agreed upon and engineered. And yet, each year after that, whoever the energy services company comes in is going to measure and verify that with you and say, we guaranteed you $100,000 a year, you actually saved 110, which is great. Or if you saved 90, then the energy services company cuts you a check for the difference. So the guaranteed savings part of that.
That's the part that I like.
Does each of the companies bring in their own equipment? So I know with Siemens in the past, Siemens, it's been Siemens equipment, and only Siemens can work on it. Would that be the same with any company that does this service for us?
Yeah, so that's a good question. It's...I think Larry can speak to this too, but for what you have for Siemens, it's building automation, so it's controls as far as, you know, temperature, things like that, to run your boilers. Larry can schedule things on a computer to schedule boilers to turn on and off and things like that. So from that standpoint, the equipment is Siemens, but the way it speaks and talks, there's a new protocol out called Backnet. So every company, you know, and you would talk about this with your partner, whichever energy services company it is, you'd want to have Backnet, an open protocol system. So if you chose like a Honeywell, you would want Backnet, so in case you ever wanted to kick one of Honeywell or Siemens out, another company can come in and work on that equipment, the controls. As far as actual HVAC equipment, like a boiler or an air handler or anything like that, we'll...we sit down with the school district and say, if you...Siemens doesn't make equipments, but if you buy a train unit, if you buy a York unit, if you buy this boiler or that boiler, these are the efficiencies, this is the cost, so we'll let you pick. This is our recommendation, but we'll sit down with you and have you pick the equipment. Just be part of the process, yeah. So, yeah, it's very...that's a good question, because it's...you can...it's...you don't want to get...stuff shouldn't ever be pushed on you. This should be...this whole project should be your...the school district selecting. And as you get into it, and we call them facility improvement measures, as those get developed, we actually have a very fluid Excel spreadsheet that we list them all out, and we put the savings next to them. And we can actually take them in and out of the Excel spreadsheet, so it affects the savings and the payback. So, you know, we would sit down eventually and say, you know, boiler in every school, HVAC equipment, controls, lighting, building envelope, roofs, all that will be engineered and costs will be listed out. And you can sit here and play with that and say, what if we take the roof out? How does that change the savings? Or what if we add a roof? So you can really...it's totally your project. That's how we look at it. So...because we don't...and I think if you look, if you...you know, I'm going to give you some references afterwards, but if you talk to some other districts, it's really...it's...our job is to give you the entire project. It's up to you what you want to select, right? So...and that's part of building a master plan too, which we talked to Larry about. After you're done with this, if you don't pick a roof or you don't pick a boiler, now you have a master plan for a couple of years down the road, or five or 10 years, you know. It's been engineered, this is the size it's supposed to be, this is how much CFM we need, how many BTUs you need, whatever it is. That's all engineered for you, and you have that in your plan. So even if you don't select, you can always do it down the road, so. Again, that's why those...the service payments is both maintenance and as well as measurement and verification. So you get your guaranteed performance and a single source responsibility. So whether it's Siemens or Honeywell, whoever it is, that's your one point of contact. You will...there will be zero change orders throughout this process. It's...that's one of the great...it's a lot of the risk that the ESCO takes on is there's zero change orders. So we don't come back to you and say, oh, by the way, we forgot 20 valves, we're going to have to...you guys are going to have to pay for that. That's up to that company to engineer that in the beginning.
And if they don't, then they eat it, not us.
Yeah, we eat it, yeah. And it really takes on a life cycle approach, that you're really looking at everything, you know, for life cycle versus first cost. Let's just, you know, there's a domestic water tank that's broken, let's just throw something in there. You know, maybe there's some new technology, or maybe you can convert to gas, maybe you can do solar. We've had a lot of districts ask us to look at renewable energy. Even if you don't do it, let's look at wood chips, pellets, solar, I mean, you name it, geothermal, you can look at everything. And not everything makes the list, but that's part of sitting down with the ESCO up front and saying, you know, this is our district's goals, this is what the community wants to see. Can you guys look at that? Yes, no, how much engineering is going to take? All those questions get answered upfront. And one of the big ones, improvements can be made with no impact to taxpayers. So 90...I'd say 90% of our projects that we've done, or most performance contracts are done through tax exempt lease purchases. So basically, it's like your school buses or things like that. You...and that process is put out to an RFP as well. So we would...whichever energy services company you selected, we'd put an RFP out to banks to bid on your project. So you get aggressive interest rates. And what that does is...so even I can say, Bank of America has actually opened their own energy services division for funding for schools. I actually met with her two weeks ago at a conference up in Conway, and she said, you know, call me anytime, I'll give you any help you need, but they have their own division set up for tax exempt lease purchases. So what that does is that takes all the risk off of the school district, right? So...and the key part of that tax exempt lease purchase is there's a nonappropriation clause. So if...because you guys can't appropriate your budget every year. So if 10 years down the road, you can't appropriate a certain budget, technically, the bank could come and take their boiler back. Are they going to do that? Probably not, but that's part of that nonappropriation clause. So...and the other key part here too is, I don't know if it's on here, but there's...there's no...there's zero upfront costs for the school district. So if you...now, I have a quick little graph that shows you the flow of how everything works, the process goes, but you will...if you enter into...you put out an RFQ for companies to respond, and you go through the process, there is a letter of intent stage and things like that, but you will not make a payment until one year after your construction is done. So...
The payment then comes out of the savings.
The payment, yes. And the payment comes out of the savings at that point. So we'll get into that a little bit more, but that's another great thing for school districts. Just a real quick, I put this slide together. If you had, say, a $400,000 utility budget, and if you saved 15% a year, that'd be $60,000 a year in savings. Over 15 years, you could do almost a million dollar project. And of course, if you, you know, if you did 20%, over 15 years, you could do much larger, you could do a larger project. These are conservative. Typically, I mean, our savings can be anywhere from 28 to 33% usually. So...but I'm not going to throw these huge numbers at you and, you know, be like, holy smokes, we can do all that. But this is typical. The average project in Maine, in New Hampshire, in Vermont is around like $2 million that schools have been doing in towns. So it's, you know, it gets pretty exciting when you see, you know, potentially 100% of that is funded by savings. And we have some districts that say, hey, listen, we want to look at other stuff, infrastructure-wise, that don't have great paybacks, but if we budgeted $25,000 or $50,000 a year over 20 years, you can do that much more in this part of this process, so. Any questions on that? And I just...I like to put these pictures in here. We'll go through them real quickly, but this is a school in Maine that...this was supposed to be originally just a burner replacement. The burner wasn't...was failed, so let's just replace the burner. But they ended up doing a performance contract with $140,000 a year in savings, and they got this instead. So do you, you know, it's that single point of sale, do you look at that and say, let's just replace that real quick, get it fixed? Or should we take a holistic approach to the entire district and say, is there a potential for this? And again, in a classroom, we, you know, with a typical unit ventilator, you would just take it out, replace it. But in this instance, we put in an energy recovery ventilator. And we actually were teamed up with some local carpenters to do the shelving in the classroom too. That's, again, part of this infrastructure project. You look at other things rather than just ripping out a unit ventilator and putting a new one in. Again, and you'll look at...we go above the ceilings, we look at insulation, the whole nine yards. This school couldn't...they couldn't understand why they were getting drafts into the classroom. So again, just building envelope, and we also insulated the ceiling tiles as well. And this was Turner High School in Maine. They actually had a wood chip boiler that was servicing one school. And long story short, it was so oversized, the superintendent said, can you look at this boiler again? I just want to make sure it's properly done. So we did. Our engineers looked at it, and they actually...we ended up piping...it was similar campus to what you guys have. We piped the other two schools, elementary school and middle school, to the high school, and they used the same amount of wood chips the next year. So the boiler was just hugely oversized. So they added two schools and they ended up using the same amount of chips, and they saved 58,000 gallons of oil in the process. And that same school...I like to put this up here because that school district is not a big one. I think people hear performance contracting, like, oh, only huge schools or huge districts do it, but Turner Schools ended up getting runner-up as far as comprehensive project of the year for the A Double E New England, and they lost to...I think they lost to Coke, Coca-Cola, which they have 25 energy engineers on their staff, so that's kind of hard to compete with. But a little school in Maine got, you know, first runner-up as project of the year. And this again, you know, if you were just doing, you know, a quick, you know, Larry, fix those lights, you know, you just replace the bulb with potentially a fixture, but in an infrastructure project, you look at the entire space and how can we make some improvements and some insulation in the tiles too, and obviously new ceiling tiles with LED lights. You look at windows. Windows tend to be...they don't have the greatest payback, but this is part of the infrastructure piece again, that this district, I mean, over here, you have, you know, it looks like an old prison, and now you have a school that...this...the school board actually said, let's just do this wing. And once they saw it, they said, we should have done the whole building at that point, because it just makes a huge difference as far as, you know, when teachers and kids come back into school and they're like, oh, we did an energy project, and we don't see anything, you know? But when you...like the previous slide, if you look at the cabinets and you're doing shelving, and you're doing some things in the classroom to make things, you know, appear to be and look nicer, and obviously, and now you have the learning environment that also gets improved as well. This is a wood chip boiler plant, you know, there wasn't any room in the boiler room, so we built a casing housing for the pellet boiler, and it pipes right into the header, into the current boiler room. Yeah, so what are the obstacles when you, you know, if you're looking to make improvements in your schools? It's obviously lack of capital. Is there a vision or a master plan down the road for your HVAC or your infrastructure? You know, we recommend looking for a partner that's experienced, you know, they can demonstrate all the infrastructure elements. We even look at security when you do infrastructure improvements, obviously mechanical, electrical, fire. You want a financially stable company, able to offer financing. You want a financially stable company, able to offer financing. Obviously, the financing is a big piece of this. And you get into some great discussions when you partner up with a good energy services company, so. And then a bill, you know, you wanna be able to guarantee the results, and then execute and implement the plan, so. So this is kinda the fancy, we thought it was fancy when we designed it, but, there you go. So basically, this is the process, and this is another, I was telling, we fell in the team that, this is not a knee-jerk reaction thing. This is, let's really take a look at the whole district, and, I mean, there's a lot of steps here to get you to, even to, to getting a project going, but, I mean, these aren't months, but these can be weeks as far as that goes. But, when you, when you, the customer and the ESCO identify your goals, at that point, you look at, come in and do a preliminary audit and say, "Yes, we think you have a project," or whoever it is, and then you put out a request for qualifications at that point. And say, "Any energy services company, come respond to us, we want your ideas," and they'll get big binders like that with all their qualifications.
We can ask for it electronically.
I know, I just stand.
So, that being said, you can, in the state of New Hampshire, you, you don't have to, but typically, most school districts will, because you'll get a lot of responses, and you'll interview, typically they'll interview two to three, I believe three is what the requirement is, but, three companies, come in and interview and, you know, sell us on yourself, so, tell us about your company. Then after you select an energy services company, you move into a letter of intent. And again, that would be something to say that, we're gonna, because we're, any energy services company gonna do a lot of engineering for this project, that's basically just saying that we don't do it all, and then you just say, "Thank you very much," and walk away, kinda thing. And then after the letter of intent, you get an investment-grade audit. That's, you're gonna have 20 engineers running, going through your buildings, looking at everything. Data logger's gonna be put on everything, we're not, I mean, we trust Larry, but to say, you know, the school operates from, you know, 7:30 to 3:30, we're actually gonna put dataloggers on pumps and boilers and the whole nine yards, fans, so, you get some very, very detailed information. So again, it goes through the process, you know, confirming the results. At that point, you can say, "Hey, look, we don't wanna do it." Like I said, we pull that spreadsheet up and we go through the project, and you say, "This looks good or it doesn't look good," that's kinda when you make that decision. Then you negotiate a scope and a contract, you do the work, you commission it, you have the agreement that it's, that it's done right, and then you measure and verify it after the fact. So, in summary, again, but like we said, no out-of-pocket costs for this, for a school district. Significantly reduced schedule, you have one point of contact, it's the energy services company, that's it. They're gonna, they're gonna GC the entire thing for you. Again, it's paid through by savings, and it's a low life cycle cost as a whole. And this is, we do, some schools like to do an energy dashboard, we do a lot with STEM in schools. So some schools have elected to put, you know, the flat-screen TV in the lobby, and kids can go up and be interactive with it, and parents in the community can go up to it and say, "What are we doing in our schools to save energy?" And we can even link it back to the science classrooms if they wanna do energy analysis and things like that. In some school districts, we've gone back and done wind farms, we'll bring in wind farms and set them up with the kids, and they figure out how to line up a wind farm and how to generate energy and things like that. So that's some of the, I mean, you can check references at that, whenever you get to that point, but that's something we, and Siemens has invested a lot of money in, which is great, I think is great, to get back to the schools. And they're actually looking more too at STEM workforce. How do we generate more workforce folks with a STEM, especially in schools and teachers? Some, you know, a lot of some districts are appointing an actual STEM teacher. So we've looked to help financially back that up and get that moving, so. It's interesting stuff, for sure. And this is, I'm just gonna pass this around real quick, you guys can keep, hang on to this, but this is, some districts like this, this is a press release we do. This just helps as far as, with teachers in the community, what are we doing? So, this happened to be Hillsboro Deering in New Hampshire, but they're gonna save $2.5 million by 2026 with their project. It tells you the improvements they're doing, the guaranteed savings every year. You know, how many kilowatt-hours they're saving, how many cars it's taking off the road, how many trees they're saving. And then there's a blurb down here, which I like a lot, it says, "Teachers and students can help." And just gives a couple of things, like, I can't read the fine print, but it'll say, you know, obviously turn the lights off when you leave a room, or, you know, how does the HVAC actually work in your room? And when, you know, when you feel it's cold, is it actually 68 degrees, or is it, you know, how cold is it? Like it just, it tells you things to be conscious of. So, it can help the school district kinda define what your energy standards are, so. Some schools like it, some don't, but.
Those are two different ones.
Yeah, one's for Hillsboro and one's for Barrington, that we recently did. So again, back to the relationship between the customer and the contractor. This is another, we thought, fancy slide, but. So in the plan and spec world, you would just, you would go out to lowest bid. You'd probably get change orders here and there throughout the project. Everybody's looking at getting the lowest first cost. And there can sometimes be an adversarial relationship between the contractor and the customer, potentially. With performance contracts, you get, depending on law, you can, you'll select the best qualified company. Again, no change orders, and now you're looking at life cycle costs for every piece of equipment in the district as a whole. Again, you're looking for the best long-term solution and operational savings in your district, as far as, and energy savings, obviously. That's a lot of information, and hopefully 15, 20 minutes, but, does anybody have any questions?
So, if you go back to your flow chart of how it all works, in the sequence of events. You're saying no change orders, but you spoke to having a spreadsheet where you're keeping track of, "Oh, we're gonna take that project out, we're gonna put this project in." So that all needs to happen before the letter of intent?
That would be, that's after the letter of intent.
After the letter of intent, but before.
Negotiate, right?
That would be during negotiate the scope of the contract. Okay. Do you ever have customer, I'm sorry. Do you ever have customers that you go back and start over with again? You complete one phase and then you come back and?
Yeah, we've had, there's been two districts that have done four phases, like four performance contracts. One district, they just wanted, they wanted air conditioning in a building, and we're gonna have it, and so they did a performance contract on that. There's not a lot of savings, there's like zero savings with that, but, there's stuff like that, that, you know, one superintendent, he was, he wanted to leave his, you know, his mark on the district, so we looked at solar, wind, every renewable possible, and if we could, if we could get it in, we did it, like that kinda stuff. So, yeah, there's been different phases to projects. That's why I said, you know, you have that master plan. So, you can say, "Yeah, like, you know, whatever company, let's do X, Y, and Z, and let's, now at least we know we have 12 other FIMs that are there for our plan." You know, and they're priced out and they're engineered, and we know they're right, you know?
The superintendents with whom I've spoke, that spoken, who have had contracts either with Siemens or with other companies, have been really excited about what they've been able to do. Because their projects, that if they were just trying to put all of that into a general operating budget, it would never have happened, so.
And the examples that you give, they're 15-year or 20-year?
Yeah, you can do, the shortest one we've done is 10 years. Obviously, less, if you go 10 years, that's, your payback gets less and less, right? But, yeah, we've done 10, anywhere from 10 to 20, typically, there's like, they're 17, 17 to 18 years. Some districts don't like to go 20, because a lot of times, that's the life cycle of a piece of equipment, but that's the typical range we see.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Okay, it's 7:02, I'm going to close the public hearing. In closing the public hearing, I'm gonna get on a soapbox for a moment. I would encourage those of you listening at home, if anyone's watching tonight, if you have concerns about the school district, about the budget, questions, you don't understand how something works, the best way to get yourself educated is to attend meetings, and to watch some meetings, and attend some meetings, and attend public hearings, and budget committee meetings. There's been a lot of talk on social media lately about the budget, and the tax rate, and things like that. And this is just my humble opinion, as a citizen and the chairman of your school board. It's not the best way to educate yourself, folks. Get involved at this level. Now, it'd be easy for me to write this comment on social media, but I choose to be at these meetings and to make statements here. So anybody that's out there watching, the Farmington Facebook forum is not always the best place to educate yourself. Maybe it is the best place to vent, but if you have concerns about the school district, please contact your board members or come to meetings. We had a public hearing tonight, nobody came, or at least nobody spoke, we had a couple people here, so, thank you. All right, financials.
Do we have to take a, do we have to take a vote to ratify our?
Oh, we should, yes, because our public hearing's over, thank you, Mr. Frida.
I will make a motion to ratify our public elections.
Motion to ratify the election results, is that the right wording, I guess? Second by Mrs. Moore, in discussion. Have we gotten a call for a vote, all those in favor? All right.
I abstain. If you feel it's a conflict of interest.
Well, I was part of the election, so I don't know.
So was I.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think you're fine.
Okay, I was just checking, didn't know how I should land on that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for being here in case we needed any clarification on the law.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Take care.
I'm excited to be in this room.
All right, financials.
Included in your packet is that we could start with the general fund operating budget. At this point, many of the encumbrances, except for some year-end activities, have been accounted for. Right now, our budget, the amount remaining in the general fund, is $574,967. Some of the end-of-year work that will happen, we do have some field work being done. We have some chimney repairs being done at Henry Wilson. End-of-year expenses for graduation. We do pay out on the curriculum and extracurricular activities. So you will see at the next month's meeting, you will see that balance deplete, but it is amounts that have been budgeted for, and we're obviously looking at lines by lines. Are there any specific questions about lines, or?
Any questions, yes?
So the items that you just mentioned, are those encumbered or not?
They're not encumbered, so that would be coming off of the $574,000. So, we're not really certain yet, for example, all the costs involved with graduation. You know, Larry is working on his costs as far as the repairs and chimney and things like that. So you'll see all of those pieces hit the budget.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Do we do revenues, or?
I can certainly talk to the revenue piece. Right now, of course, we're right on schedule, collecting from the town for our appropriation and for state education tax. We have received a little bit additional in line two for tuition from another school who's sending a pupil here. You'll see that amount of $19,193. The special education director and I have been working diligently on line 19, and that's our Medicaid budget. We still do need to receive about $71,000 in Medicaid. There is a lag, always a lag of about two or three months on those claims. But we're obviously watching that line to make certain that we do at least come as close as possible. We're making provisions, I'm not seeing that we're actually gonna hit the $180,000 in revenue. But I think it's gonna be probably about short, maybe about $20,000 or so, but that is where we will, we will cover that in our operating budget under appropriation. So, as part of the balancing the budget piece, we're, we're keeping our eye on those numbers, so. That's really my only, one of my only concerns right now. And it's a manageable concern. Other than that, you know, I just wanna show, for example, if we skip to page three, under line 50, you'll see where we're still taking in some preschool tuition revenue, and that is a fund that we established with a restricted fund balance. So right now, this year, we've collected $8175. And, so I mean, that fund is still continuing to build. Let's see. For another piece in here. This is gonna report on gate receipts, it doesn't look like it got pulled into. But we do, we have about, about $9,000 in gate receipts, I'll make certain that I pull that into next month's meeting. Can you report?
That's the gate receipts just for athletics?
Yep.
We only, we only plan on getting $3,500, based on history.
There's a lot of people coming to games, I love it.
The third part of my report is really on grants and special revenue, special revenue grants. And those really just track as, as activities are approved by the Department of Education. And, and we execute those activities, and then we collect the funds as those expenditures are made, so. It's always like a continuous revolving. And again, as far as FAMI, I'm not seeing an issue where we're going to have to really dig into the general fund to be able to cover some FAMI expenses.
I'm waiting to hear from the state exactly where we're gonna fall for summer, and that I should know by our next meeting.
Any other questions on financials? Policies. Oh, sorry. Oh, I thought you said.
So we have three policies. Student in possession of weapons policy, student tobacco and controlled illegal substances policy, and then, and these are, the school board's digital documents policy. And, so looking at the first one, the JICI, the student in possession of weapons policy. Currently, we have a policy that lumped students, staff, and the public in a single policy. And trying to make this more workable as we're dealing with students, as, to have a separate policy that speaks to student issues, a separate, and then we will be bringing a policy for staff, and then all others. But wanting to really hone in on what we're looking at as far as requirements, making sure that we have all of our cross-references with federal and state pieces in there. Our, the policies that we have hadn't been reviewed for a while. And some of the requirements were, you know, whether it's this or this, it's the same across the board. And wanting to make sure that we could really look at what it was that was being brought to us as a weapon, and what the intent was, and look at the situation, and deal with it accordingly, as opposed to any threat, whether it was a more minor threat or a major threat, being treated exactly the same way under the same policy because of the letter of the law. This still, still very clearly defines firearms under section 921 of Title 18 of the United States Code for Safe School Zone. Really, there aren't major changes, other than cleaning up the language to make sure that it's clearly accessible. Trying to explain some of these policies to parents is fun, sometimes. Also looking at defining a weapon as any device, instrument, material, or substance which, when used, attempted to be used, or threatened to be used, is readily capable of causing serious physical injury or death to others. There are a lot of things that could be used as weapons that wouldn't necessarily come under the class. come under the classification of weapon unless there's an intent that's put them behind it. So, we want to make sure that we have some latitude to look at the full case. And then, this also contains a clearer cross-reference to our due process and student conduct policy. It's currently 5114. It's the future JIA, which will be coming to you hopefully in the next round of policies as well, because we need to update that. We're finding that that one needs a few tweaks as well. So, the basic pieces of, you know, how long a student can be suspended for by a principal, how long the superintendent can then extend the suspension, the board's purview, those remain pretty much the same under our other policy. But there's not necessarily an absolute, it will be this if it hits this policy. It gives some latitude to look to see what's the condition, what's the circumstance under which this falls. So, looking at this, probably being a first read as it's a more lengthy, unless you'd like this to be a final read. I don't know how much time you had.
I think it's good for a final read.
A motion for a final read.
But this is contained, I've got a motion and a second for final reads. A motion by Mrs. Moore, and a second by Ms. McHoney. This policy references another policy, which isn't.
This portion won't be changing. It's the fact that not all of the other, the due process piece won't change in that policy. What will change is the reference, because that one still has the older coding, and it doesn't have all of the cross-references in it to be updated, state and federal.
But this one hasn't come before us yet.
That one has not, no.
Can I ask then that we do a first read? I think when we're trying to finalize a policy that references another policy that hasn't come before us yet, I'm not sure that it's wise to do a final read on that yet. Is it okay?
Yeah.
Any discussion on that?
Might be difficult, because there's a lot of them that cross-reference quite a few. So, you might pile them up.
Really?
Just be, yeah, be careful about.
I just look at this one as one of, you know, the weapons policy is a major.
Because where it cites what the current policy ID is, and then it allows for when we do update the current 5114 to the future JIA. Closes that open end, ties up that knot.
It says that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So, it references where our current act of policy is.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see the second line, and I didn't have that written in my packet.
Just as long as it doesn't end up contradicting it. If it ends up contradicting it, then you'll have to bring this policy, JICI.
Yeah, okay. So, it references a future, a future change.
Yeah, it does.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't read that, so maybe it was just.
Yeah, so it's here.
Okay, yeah. So, we have a motion and a second for a final read on this. You okay? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
And then, the next, the student tobacco controlled substances policy. One of the issues that we ran into was, this was last on in 2003, I believe. And some of the things that are now available that fall under this policy weren't on the market then. So, trying to make sure that we have as many of the possibilities encompassed. So, it's now, instead of just tobacco and drug policy, it's tobacco and controlled slash illegal substances policy. Because there are things that fall under controlled substances that might not be illegal, but they are controlled and not necessarily available to all. Looking at those things that are under tobacco products also includes anything that contains nicotine, tobacco or nicotine in any other form. So, we're trying to also, if there's anything else that comes out on the market once the ink is dry, we still have some latitude here. It's the intent behind. So, we have included cigarettes, cigars, snuff, smokeless tobacco, smokeless cigarettes, products containing tobacco or nicotine, tobacco or nicotine in any form. Also, the sale, transfer, distribution, use, or possession or being under the influence of unauthorized prescription drugs, alcohol, narcotics, unauthorized inhalants, controlled substances, illegal drugs, and/or mood-altering, mood or behavior-altering substances is prohibited on any school, district property, school, district-owned vehicle, or district-approved vehicle used to transport students to and from school or district activities. Also applies to any district-sponsored or district-approved activity, event, or function. Use, sale, transfer, possession of drug-related paraphernalia is also prohibited. It's a little bit more comprehensive. We have some potential loopholes. And well, is this that, and does this fall under with the other policy?
Now, further down, it says no student shall purchase, attempt to purchase, or possess. So, you've, is this reiterating what's up at the top?
It does reiterate.
So, if, I don't know, say, one of our students was arrested for purchasing cigarettes, would that come to us? Would that fall under this policy?
No, because it says in any facility, any school vehicle, or on school grounds maintained by the district. So, if it takes place off of school grounds, it's not our purview.
Okay.
Now, if you have an athlete under an honor code, that is, then that may be different.
And this JIH that we're referencing, future JIH, is that the policy that's going to outline whether or not the student comes before the board?
The JIH is the policy that outlines the, our search policy.
Oh.
So, this one, JIA is coming before the board in due process. That's the feature.
So, in the last one that we just approved, in this one, is it stating it all anywhere in there that violation of this policy comes before the board?
Yes, it's in due process.
Under the due process section, yes.
So, this draft, this proposed slight change is, "An out-of-school suspension by the principal will not exceed 10 days. A meeting with the superintendent will be required before return to school after any 10-day suspension. It may be required for a shorter suspension at the discretion of the superintendent." So, currently, our 5114 says all 10-day suspensions come before the board before a student can return. So, that's where JIA will have changed. So, this one will need to only go into effect for the new school year. It can't be something that goes in effect tomorrow.
Right.
And then, the next bullet says, "A long-term suspension by the superintendent will not exceed 20 days in total. Students must appear before the board prior to return to school."
But for a 10-day, they wouldn't automatically come to you.
So, maybe I'll make a motion to accept as a first read, so that each of you can process that and understand the differences. Just kind of going through examples of what we've seen so far. And do you think that it would have a desired outcome if those students didn't come in front of the board? And saw the superintendent as the in-between, as the progression of severity?
Out of the hearings.
I'll second, good discussion.
What was the motion?
She-motion.
Oh, first read, I'm sorry. Second by Penny. Out of, out of the hearings that we've conducted this year, there's only a handful, we've had several. There's only a small handful that I feel maybe didn't have to come to our level. I think what, I think what has happened prior to the hiring of Ms. Moore, we had none. We saw no behavior to come before the board. And I like the message that it sends when a parent and a child have to come before the board, sometimes to be able to return. I think it sends a, I think we send a message that we are watching behavior in our schools and that.
We're involved.
We're involved, and we're not taking issues lightly. So, and not, you know, by no means do I want to micromanage and see everything that comes, you know, we don't need to have everything come before us. But it sends a message, you know? When you have to get dressed up on a Monday night, go sit in front of five people you don't know to talk about your behavior in our schools and whether or not you're going to be welcomed back, it sends a message, in my opinion.
So, that's still in place with the weapons policy that we just passed? That this change would only apply to tobacco and controlled illegal substances, violation of this policy?
And so, I mean, certainly, we can, if you look at it as a first read, and you can compare the, compare this to what we have, I can, I can put the suspensions policy, in fact, I think I did drop it in the.
I think it's in the policy committee.
Yeah, it's in the policy committee folder. I can drop it into this folder so that you can take a look at that one for comparison, if you'd like to do so.
Because is the opinion of the policy committee that we're, we're seeing too much at the board level?
No. We didn't really, as a policy committee, make that determination simply because it's the purview of the board, whether or not we needed that. The discussion at the policy committee meeting was, there's no in-between. It goes straight from principal issues to 10-day suspension for tobacco, or drugs, or paraphernalia possession, and straight to the board. Superintendent was meeting with, you know, either over the phone or meeting personally, if available, at the time of the suspension. But then, it was a big jump.
Yeah. I mean, when I look at weapons and drugs and tobacco products, we've had some 10-day suspensions that came before the board this year that just didn't need to, that didn't pertain to either one of these issues.
Yes.
Those are the things I think we need, we don't need to be involved in. But I like the message we send. We don't want this crap in our schools. We don't want things that can hurt others in our schools. I like the message it sends when you have to be inconvenienced enough to come before the board. With those two policies, other stuff, a 10-day, if it's a 10-day, because, you know, it's built up and then behavior, and it's like, we're going to really send a message this time? I don't know if it really has to come before the board. I think that's up to the, to the building administrator and the superintendent to say, okay, this person's getting to the point where they're going to need to see the board, then that's fine. But it's just, I really feel with the weapons policy and the drug/tobacco policy needs to, needs to come see us. That's just food for thought when we decide to go further with this policy. Further discussion on this policy, we've got a motion and a second for a first read. Okay, all those in favor? Aye, thank you. BED?
Okay, so. And I included in your packet as well, the BEDG R is the boilerplate from the School Boards Association. And they title it "Access to Minutes in Public Records." This was brought forward as digital documents policy, which is essentially the same thing, because those are the documents that the board has and how to make those available. One of the pieces here, some of the sections that had been in the initial piece was, were perhaps more procedural. This does a little bit of both. And so, whether or not this ends up being, whoops, just moved. Whether or not this, oh, did I, oh, I did. That was me, never mind, sorry about that. Whether this ends up being kind of the procedural piece with the R, or we take that and back it up to just the statement about what the board is about doing, and, and then make that happen, that's that piece. And I'm going to let Stan and Angie talk to it more about.
Can somebody send that to me, because I can open the BED.
The Word document that's the school board one won't open.
Yeah.
It won't open?
It says it's corrupt.
Ours will, but the other one won't.
Oh, interesting, okay. It lets me open it, but, all right.
And then, I have it on here now, I just.
But I kind of looked at this one as being that not the R, this is the policy.
Right, and so, I probably need to take the R off of that.
And the other thing that we're working on with all of the details is really the R part.
R's gone, okay. Yep. Let me try redoing the school board's piece, I'm not sure. And theirs was also an R that covers most of these same pieces, so. Let me see how I can.
That's the boilerplate one.
Part of it may be because, maybe because it's in rich text format, so let me change the format and resend it.
Was there anything, Angie or Stan, that you wanted to talk about this policy?
I think this just documents what we've kind of had as our normal, normal expectation when it comes to our documentation. There's nothing exciting or shocking to me in this, but.
No, but I think we haven't had this, and it would be good for the public to know exactly what we would, what we intend on doing and where they can find stuff. I think that's key.
Motion to accept as a, I read it off hers, as a first read.
Motion for a first read by Mrs. Moore, and second by Mr. Frida, discussion. Hearing now, I call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Bid discussion on the retention pond.
Okay. Who ready, Larry?
I added that as a PDF, sorry.
Present this to you. We have a very old warrant article. We discovered it is still in the books back, that the voters approved back on March 8th, 2011. I've included the ballot in your board packet, Article 11, in which, I'll just summarize for you. The voters approved a vote of yes, 273 votes, to 131 noes, 273 yeses to 131 noes, to raise an appropriate sum of $24,000 to repair and maintain drainage on the retention ponds adjacent to Valley View Community School and Farmington High School Athletic Field. With the authorization to withdraw the $24,000 from the Buildings and Grounds Capital Reserve Fund created for that purpose, this is a non-lapsing appropriation in accordance with Statute 32:7, and will not lapse until all repairs are complete or by June 30th, 2017.
You think we found it?
And, well, I think it was a historian that brought this to our attention, all three of us to our attention. So, we solicited a bid back at the end of March. And we actually held two mandatory site reviews, simply because we just had questions, bidders had questions. We wanted to give them every opportunity to be out and to be able to look at the sites and to be able to determine what they felt would be the best price. There still is some unknowns. So, we had a total of six bidders come to the mandatory site review. We also engaged Mr. Tatro at Norway Plains, because he's been familiar with some of the work that's been done on these retention ponds. And also, we wanted to make certain that we would still remain in compliance with, with any wetlands requirements. So, we received three bids. One from Lance's Landscape. One from Lance's Landscaping in Union, in the amount of $16,300. His bid does not include ditch line for settling around and under the outlet pipe at Valley View School. The second bid, the second highest, is Ingram's Landscaping and Construction out of Bow, New Hampshire, in the amount of $17,388. His bid is inclusive, modifications or deletions are subject to price changes. And then the third bidder, Paul Baron from Middleton, his is $23,721. And he also did the work, previous work, and maybe Larry has had some discussion, and I'm going to pull you into some of the history and the discussion that you've had with Mr. Baron, if you wouldn't mind.
Before Larry starts, do we still have money in that fund?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was the first thing I thought of.
Yes. We did check that before we went out to bid.
Yes. So actually, our recommendation is to go local with Mr. Baron, simply because he's already familiar with the project. He's, I don't know, I guess.
He did, he did the project, I believe it was back, he thinks it was back around 2008 or something. Big thing is, the more expensive thing is cleaning the ditch out that runs from the athletic field, retention pond down around the softball field, to Henry Wilson down towards the annex. But he did the work on the other three retention ponds at that time, too, so he's familiar with what the requirements are for it. The big thing, the ditch that they're talking about at the Valley View School, that's the one you see down on the practice field that they use now down over the hill, is two big sinkholes there now that are actually about three feet deep and three feet wide. They believe it's because the culvert that was put in was just dropped on the field and either the fill's gone underneath it or, excuse me, or the pipe is plugged or just the way the water is rushed through in some of the past storms has undermined a pipe. So they're not, nobody is really sure what the extent of the work will be there. That's why Lance's Landscaping didn't put a bid in, include that in it. So, but Paul is aware, Randy remembers, looking back, we had him check to make sure that there were no wetland issues with repairing that. He said, no. So like I said, and Paul, they all recommend waiting until after July because of the water levels now. It's just going to be too difficult to try to dig that ditch out and everything with the amount of water running through it right now.
And that's the hard part, because of the way that the warrant is written.
Right, because the warrant is written, completion by June 30th.
Completion, not contracted, not scheduled.
Correct. So Lori and I are on this Thursday's trustee of the trust funds agenda to discuss the timing with them and to see what our options are if, we may not have options, it may be this is what we have to do if we're going to do it. Going to another vote at this point is perhaps not our most expedient option.
Correct.
So.
So you need a motion to go with Mr. Baron?
This is Paul Baron.
Yes, Paul Baron, yes. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to, for this.
Bid.
Bid to Paul Baron.
Pending funds.
Right. Do I have a second?
Well, the funds are there, maybe pending our ability to.
Access the funds?
Access the funds and complete the work. If he's saying the work can't really be completed before August and our funds run out in June, we may have an issue.
Right. And we just don't know legally if there's any piece of a phase that can be acceptable.
We, we have questions of the trustees as far as the mechanics.
Have we done it once since 2011?
No.
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 This was voted and shelved evidently.
Well, we're making a motion to move forward anyway, find out if, so motion by Mrs. Moore and second by Mrs. McAlany. Further discussion?
Yeah, just the, oh, sorry.
Whoever.
So, that's a 26% difference between the recommended bidder and the next bidder. I can understand why Lance's Landscaping is out of the running, saying as the bid wasn't complete and they wouldn't include the ditch line.
Basically.
It's the $6,000 difference.
Ingram's Landscape, he's, his is, he put in his bid basically that this was his initial bid, but if he runs into extra costs, he's going to pass it on to us. He didn't say specifically that that was going to be the, if there's changes in material that he has to haul out or anything or fill that he has to put in, he's going to increase the price.
Not if we were to change the scope of the project, but if he were to determine that, he needed something different.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I follow up on hers?
Well, did you have a question?
Oh, well, actually, that was one of my questions. I forgot what I was.
Would, would Paul, so if Paul had to do this work and he couldn't, we needed it done now before July, June 30th, his may increase, too, because he may need more supplies in order to do the work down there.
Did the bidders know the, the window?
Yes.
Did they, did they know it when?
Yes. Most of them wrote in their response.
I would think he did know.
Most of them wrote in their response that they couldn't do it in that timeframe because of water level and, and digging the ditch around the school would be when, in that timeframe would be while school is still in session and you have kids out on the playground and stuff in that area.
You actually kind of answered my question. It was as to whether or not any of the other ones would be able to complete it within that timeframe, but it sounds as though.
So who are we going to get the answer from as to whether or not it suffices that we stop in a, a phase of the project?
Lori and I are meeting with the trustees on Thursday night.
You mean the trustees of the trust fund? And you think they're going to have that answer?
I think it would be Kathy Seaver.
I mean, I was a trustee of the, well, I understand that, but I mean, I was a trustee of the trust fund, I mean, I think we need more of a legal opinion or something.
Well, one of our, one of our trustees is a lawyer.
Oh, well, that's good.
That's true.
Who is that? Manny? Oh, I didn't know he was a trustee.
Yes.
Hey, good. Two and one, we don't get charged extra either. Okay.
So I do a motion.
Yes.
So these three people, it says six people, so these three were the six, were included in those six people who walked around?
Yes, it was a mandatory walk.
So they, they walked around and they looked at the, what they needed to do and still two of them can't tell you whether or not they're.
Yes, because the, the main, the main issue is the Valley View in the field, it's a safety issue, but they can't until they start digging up to see exactly what the problem is with it. Nobody's sure what is under there, so they wouldn't.
So it's been a sinkhole, but they're not sure exactly how.
So Paul's will change, too.
Yeah, that's what I said.
There's, there's always a potential, his was written with less.
Changes.
Changed, yeah. It was a little bit more firm, as bids can be firm.
Well, should be, because he's done it.
He's done it.
And he knows what he's going into here.
Mine's just more of a technical question. If these funds were raised and appropriated back in 2011, they would not?
It, the, it was approved to access the funds that were already in the Buildings and Grounds Fund.
Okay, but the funds have been there and earmarked essentially since 2011.
Correct.
Why do we have the time constraint of June 30th? Could we put this on next calendar year starting?
Because that's how the warrant was written in 2011, that was on.
Oh, it has to be done.
It's a non-lapsing appropriation and will not lapse until all repairs are complete or by June 30th, 2017, whichever is earlier.
Oh, I didn't see.
Well, yeah, the repairs are complete or June 30th, whichever is earlier. So if they're.
Oh, it lapses.
Yeah. So if they're complete, we can't keep tapping money.
That's amazing. I don't even, I mean, I don't remember the history, why was it given a six-year window like that?
And, and we have discussed never ever having something lapse at the June 30th again.
Yeah, right.
When it involves earthwork and excavation. Could you possibly change the window? Could that be an easier?
It would have to go to a vote, which is why I said that's probably not the most expedient. It's going to cost us quite a bit to access that.
Can any of the work be done or does it have to be completed on all three buildings?
I would say, you know, if we can get at least, if we can get 15,000 of it done, at least we will have access to that much. What I don't want to do is get something opened up and then not have access to the funding to finish it and then have more of a hazard created than we have currently.
I want to let, we want to let the trustees know that we're looking to address this warrant article and.
And yes, it's the 11th hour, but at least it's not 11:45.
This Thursday.
Yeah.
What is driving the need to do the work in the first place?
We're having some, at least in the issue around Valley View, there's some sinkholes that are happening.
Oh, okay. So this is, address the sinkholes.
The retention pond itself, it's basically cleaning out some vegetation, getting it back to the way they, every so many years, they're supposed to be done to keep up so that we don't have to go through a wetland permit and everything. The ditch part going down through for the drainage, that's just where it grows up over near the cattails, the bushes that grow and accumulation of silt and stuff that builds up and starts someone running through.
Okay, so this is preventative work to prevent a catastrophe, potential catastrophe?
To prevent a retention pond over flooding or something.
Okay, which wouldn't be good. Just help to emphasize the importance of.
Further discussion on awarding the bid to Paul Baron? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Proposed copier equipment from specialized purchasing consultants, bid award.
So I've included for you in your packet, our memo and supporting documentation, some of which that we just received this morning, but several months ago, the board agreed to use specialized purchasing consultants, SPC, so that they could come in and take a look and audit our equipment that we have, whether it's copiers, black color, and printer equipment. We've used SPC now, I think, for 10 years in the school district. So what their role was to include our school district as well as 11 other schools and municipalities in New Hampshire and Maine. And so their bid was a combined bid looking at 63 million copies and 708 machines. So it's a pretty sizable bid. Eight vendor, eight vendors submitted bids covering six different manufacturers. Those manufacturers, just off the top of my head, are, if I'm pronouncing it right, Carcierra, Toshiba, Konica Minolta, let's see. I think, I don't think it was Ose, Ose. So Superintendent Vaughn, myself, and Mr. Bailey have been meeting with SPC, conducting conference calls concerning the progress of this. Page two of my memo indicates, this is their report, it shows on the left-hand side, the present situation of all of the equipment that we have, and then on the right-hand side, it has a proposed scenario. The proposed situation is actually equipment that would be installed this summer, but that our first payment is not due until August 2018. Following, so in summary, they have, for example, a present situation, units to be traded would be 50, they're looking at replacing 42 new units. So you can see where some of the units, it's not necessary to replace the difference there of eight. MFPs, we're going from 12 to 10 multi-function printers. Network printers, 20, 10 of them with color, and over on the right-hand side, you'll see network printers, 14 with five that are color. On the left, duplexing machines, 46, whereas over on the right, we can downsize and we can go to 42. So at the bottom of this summary sheet, you'll see circled the figure $50,371.55. Everyone's seen that on their sheet.
Yep.
So that is comprised of $6,270, what they would propose to see what our, our color copy usage is going forward for one year. It's a slight reduction of about $400, but the bigger reduction is on black click counts, which would be $11,528. And that's down, let's see, we're talking about $3,200. And then line three, the municipal lease, our current annual payment has been $41,526, and it would be down to $32,573.
And that's if we leave, we have some of the, a few of the machines that we currently have, we continue to use. If we were to go all-new, the payment would reduce to $38,000. So it would still drop overall. If we went with all-new, it would be $55,862 in the first year. If we leave a few, it would be $50,371. We're looking to.
We're looking to really still try and shave down that $55,862. Just, you know, our conference call last week was, was actually receiving all of this information and determining, okay, what is, who is better, who is best. Currently, we are using Konica Minolta for our service and my, my history in the SAU office is that they've been very responsive in that if you make the call, the automated call at 3:00 in the afternoon, they're there first thing the next morning at 8:00 AM. So it is a good response time. I think that's rather important versus going with a vendor who, for example, is out of Lewiston, Maine, and they're going to be dispatching someone to, to come down the main turnpike. So what we're, what we've also included for you is the bid analysis, which just shows that in, for the first year, the annual cost savings, if we were to go with all-new, is So that savings take, would be on our, our 1819 budget year, when we start working on that budget.
So as we look at that, the, the five-year cost savings that are listed there, they take that 14 and they multiply it times five, but it's not quite. take that 14 and they multiply it times five, but it's not quite that because the cost savings each year goes down slightly because, so when you look at it, it's not necessarily a $71,000 savings over five years. It would be if you had all five years in the same first year. So don't get excited about that number. Look at the, the annual cost savings line.
Annual cost savings is what's.
Is really what's a better apples-to-apples comparison.
That truly affects.
Yes. Because I, I kept looking, I go, but how do we, that doesn't necessarily happen, that's not what I can sell folks on, but the 14 is, that's the actual, for that year. So looking, yeah, oh, again, so as we look at what we're asking for the board for tonight, if you grant us the permission to expend for all-new, we're still looking to shave it down, but that line would be the maximum number that we would have, and we're still trying to see what else we can cut out from here, but that would be the most that we would be able to spend in this. We're still trying to see which ones we would be refurbishing, what we would save, what else I can shift. My concern is with going with too many refurbished, that those are the ones that are frankly most likely to then need additional servicing, and if things go down for too long, then you start to lose more on productivity. So, not that I don't want to wean people away from some of the copies as well, so as we, which is partly why we're going with fewer machines in some areas, because I think as we've increased our digital presence, we aren't going to need quite as many pieces that are necessarily run off.
Yeah. Three and a half million copies a year is a lot.
It is, but if you look at other school districts, we're really not that.
We're not?
Not.
Same-sized school districts, wow.
Yeah.
So you're looking for a motion for all-new?
Motion for all-new with the understanding that we're trying to get under that.
Yeah, probably just a motion.
But it gives us not to exceed.
Yes.
That would be a good way to put it.
Now, where does the copier amortization schedule come in?
That's what we just received today, at the 11th hour.
So it's really intended just for informational and disclosure purposes, so, so for example, so they provided us an amortization schedule as if it were all-new equipment. So that's where your first payment due, August 1st, 2018, is the $38,147.42.
So that amortization schedule is essentially our worst-case scenario, and we're hoping to make it better than that.
But we're paying a lease, an annual lease.
Oh, that's the lease, okay.
So it's staying loan, but it's really a lease?
It's a lease.
Okay. At the end, we don't own those machines.
That's right. Correct.
Total number of machines? You see the breakdown by copier, printer, network printer, duplexers? Replaced 42 new. Total number of units, 42.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What's our situation if we don't do this?
Well, we make our last payment, and they pick up the machines, and we scramble. And since we did agree, you know, there was a board vote to.
You have a specific survey.
To go with this.
A motion to move forward with the amount not to exceed $55,000.
Motion by Mrs. Moore.
Fifty-five even?
Second by Stan.
Or the amount of the.
Oh, 55, 862, 56.
Not to exceed 55, 8.
62, 56.
62, 56.
You still second that?
Second by.
Yeah.
By Mr. Frida.
Do you need that repeated, Kelly?
Further discussion? So, we're leasing this stuff for a year. Is the lease cost for a year 55,000 or 170,000? In that schedule there, we're going to end up paying 190 on 170,000.
The first-year payment is the 55,000 and change, 800 something. That includes, no, that's okay, that includes the cost of the machines, but it also includes their projection on our print costs, and so that's toner, that's price per copy, those other pieces as well.
And that's for service costs.
And service.
So where's, what's the 174,000 breakdown? What's, what was that?
That would be what you end up paying for all of the machines over a five-year period. So that's the, that's the total of the principal payments. So the principal portion in year one is 32,777. $32,000.
It's because this, the annual lease line, number three, of 38,147, that includes their interest.
Right.
On the principal.
Right.
So year one payment, interest is $5,370, principal's 32,777, with a nominal interest
rate of 3.09 percent.
I may be missing something, but where does the 55,000 come into play in this? If the first payment is 38,000.
The 38,000 is for the machines.
Just the machines.
The additional is for the toner, the ink, the price per copy, and the service contract that goes with it.
Okay, so this schedule here is just for the machines?
Correct.
So it'll actually, over five years, be more than the monthly.
Correct. But this is, it, we're currently paying about $70,000 a year. This takes it down to 55 with all-new machines. So it is, it is a cost savings over what we're doing currently.
If there's a non-appropriation, is there usually one?
Yes, there is. This is a municipal lease. Yes, there is a non-appropriation clause. There has.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stan?
Okay.
Yes?
Yeah.
Food service bids.
We have them.
Yeah, it's just basically that we have them.
We have them. We have a binder, a set of binders.
So what you have, this was a publicly solicited bid. The bid specifications are on the website, and we've received three bids. Fitzvolt, Cafe Services, and Abbey Group, all are companies in New Hampshire. Chartwells wrote us this afternoon and said that they would not be submitting a bid. Sedexo also wrote me this afternoon and said that they would not be submitting a bid. So at this point, it's materials that both the superintendent and myself are going to sit down and disseminate and take a look at the budget. You're going to be probably wowed by looking at the disparity of the budgets. And the budget is really based upon how many meals can a company actually sell to the, to the students. And so based upon that, you come up with the revenue budgets, which you also get in for state and federal monies, and then from there, you have the other side of the ledger, which are the expenses, program expenses, which is the food to make the meal, and the staff who do the preparation, paper goods, uniforms, things like that, and their management fee, staffing fee and management fees.
So we have the information, you have the information. When do you project coming to the board with, and now, on top of bids, we were also going to entertain an in-house proposed plan or the cost of an in-house plan. When will we be prepared to look at that versus your recommendation on a, well.
I think we have a couple more days to polish it up.
Yeah, we, we have a draft just about.
Okay.
Certainly, we can send that for the next board meeting.
I was conservative on my meal counts, because I have started seeing meal counts declining in this past year with the current vendor, so I kind of wanted to see what are my meal counts were based upon what a company would say that they would have in meal counts. And those meal counts are basically what drives up the budget costs. So I'd like to compare my numbers, perhaps, it's going to be another day or so.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, for the next board meeting, are we going to be prepared to make a decision?
Or at least prepared to give you all of the information for you to make the decision.
Well, I, I guess my question is, you, you can take, you can take, you know, data that you've had and put together what you think an in-house option would, would cost. And then I would also assume that you will make a recommendation based on the in-house option versus the other three, right? I mean, putting together the cost of an in-house option isn't recommending one.
No.
It's showing us the difference.
Yes.
And will you also be prepared to make a recommendation to us as well? I mean, we can also hash it out, but.
Yeah.
Okay. For the next meeting?
That's our goal.
Yes.
Questions?
We've got to get it staffed, so one way or the other.
Can we get, I mean, if I'm understanding what was said, these three, they're not comparable because they have different numbers for different numbers, and is there going to be something done where, that where it's standardized, so that we can see exactly what we're getting? Apples per apple and orange for orange?
What I, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to have a list of questions that I will have for all, all three bidders separately, and my questions will be, how did you arrive at those counts? What, you know, because they were provided a lot of history, meal count history, days in service, number of meals, number of breakfasts, all the cart.
Why don't we tell them what count to base their bid on, so we can have a straight compar, a straight comparison?
I, I do do that. What I, what I say is what are.
Why don't they listen to you?
Well, partly, they're projecting, trying to say, our product is good enough, kids are going to want to buy our, buy more.
Oh, so they bump up the participation rate.
Bingo, yes. And so they're projecting that they're going to be able to sell this many more meals, therefore their budget is based off a larger number, because they think they can do better than our historic numbers.
Yeah, this, this RFP has worksheets for them to fill out. I mean.
And are those worksheets in there?
Very standard.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so what we would like from you, as you look at the pieces, is if there are specific questions that you would like us to propose to the vendors, if we could get something back, say by next Tuesday or, or so, to say, here's what we're hearing back from the board, so we can send all three, here's the question, and give them an opportunity to respond. And certainly Lori and I have a few, but you're going to be looking at it with potentially a different lens, and that's a good thing. And the more questions we can pose to them, so that we get perhaps a more apples-to-apples, because, again, they're trying to sell a product, both to the board and to the kids. So we need to see what else we need to know, so that we can make a better choice.
Next Tuesday being the 23rd, is that the date you need?
Next Tuesdays, does that make sense, or do you feel you need a little bit more time than a week to, I mean, the binders are light reading and a guaranteed cure for insomnia.
Yeah, I remember doing this once before and not being too thrilled by the condition. Because it's just a sales pitch, it has nothing to do with what's reality, as far as I'm concerned. That's all you see in a sales pitch.
So I guess probably looking at the worksheets that Lori has given is probably going to be the best apples-to-apples piece of that, and they should be in there somewhere.
Old business, is there any?
Buildings and grounds meeting, are we going to schedule that?
We need to schedule that.
Yeah.
This week, I have National Honor Society and National Junior Honor Society, both tomorrow night, and I have the trustees of the trust funds on Tuesday, on Thursday. So.
Not this week?
Or Wednesday's open.
Oh.
Wave at my family.
Do we want to do it next Monday afternoon?
I can't do too early in the afternoon.
Well, next Monday, regular meeting time?
I mean, I could do five, that's about as early as I can do.
Yeah, we have the strategic innovations plan.
Oh, that's right.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. So we could do it before then.
So five.
Oh, that's at seven?
That's at seven.
Yeah.
So we could even do six, if that was better than five, or.
Six is, six would fit.
Well, it's, who's going to be at it? It's us and, I mean, are we going to need any building administration?
I think it's going to be primarily Mr. Gordon, Mrs. Vervell.
Okay.
We could meet at the library.
Yeah.
Where, where are you having your meeting at seven?
At the library at Henry Wilson.
So.
Do it then?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, old business?
That's the 22nd.
22nd, yes.
Public participation?
Six o'clock.
Okay. Now, is Monday the 29th Memorial Day?
It is. Our next scheduled meeting would be June 5th.
Yeah, we only meet the first and third.
Oh, that's right, this is the first and third anyway. Sorry.
It's okay.
Next meeting, Monday, June 5th, 6:30, right here. Thank you to those of you viewing from home, thank you to those of you who come out here this evening, all one of you, two of you. I want to take a motion to go into non-public for legal.
That's a move.
So moved by Mrs. Moore, seconded by Mr. Frida. All those in favor by roll? Aye. Thank you.
Do we want to go down to the.